Let me say good afternoon and welcome you to the Christian Methodist Episcopal Church Town Hall. I am Skip Mason, pastor of the West Mitchell Street CME Church in Atlanta, and I am delighted to have been asked by Bishop James Walker, the chair of our CIT Committee, to host and help to plan this important town hall today. Let me greet the senior bishop of our church, Bishop Lawrence L. Reddick III, who gave conversation about the pros and cons of the COVID-19 vaccination for people of color. We know that we have seen, we've witnessed, we've listened to all types of myths and facts about the vaccine and the disease itself. And so we thought that we would gather some people within our church community and also in the health and medical community that could come and perhaps provide some insight for you to help you to make an informed decision. And so what I like to do now is to ask you to take a look at this clip, and then we'll bring our wonderful and special guest up for you.
Silence and solitude. Lily Tyson Head needs a bit of both right now. As she reflects on the trauma of her family's past while leaning on faith in the future.
Things have changed. Things have gotten better, but still needs to get a whole lot better.
All week celebrations across the country hitting a fever pitch as a new COVID-19 vaccine begins to arrive. This long-awaited moment providing hope for so many amidst the pandemic. A study by the Kaiser Family Foundation found 71% of Americans say they definitely or probably will get the COVID-19 vaccine. But black Americans are far more hesitant. Thirty-five percent say they probably or definitely will not get the vaccine.
So I want to know how much of the people who are doing the trials of the vaccine are African-American?
I'm still on the fence about the actual vaccine. In the African-American community, we never really received anything that's going to be beneficial for us in the beginning.
That distrust is well-earned. Lily's father was an unwitting player in one of the darkest chapters of our nation's history.
My father was Freddie Lee Tyson. My father is our hero.
A sharecropper in Alabama in 1932, Freddie Lee Tyson was one of 623 black men recruited into a medical study. We now know it as the infamous syphilis study at Tuskegee. Freddie thought it was a program to provide free healthcare. He had no idea that the doctor's only interest was to study the infection he had been born with.
They did not tell them they had syphilis, and the only thing they told them they had bad blood, and they were treating the bad blood. But they were not. They were lying to the people.
And I think that that is an excellent point to begin with. Let me say good afternoon to this distinguished panel of guests and permit me to introduce them. First, we have the senior bishop of the Christian Methodist Episcopal Church, Bishop Lawrence L. Reddick. He presides over the 8th Episcopal District. We are also delighted to have Dr. Valencia Bagby Young, who is a licensed psychologist, board-certified family nurse practitioner, and registered nurse. We have Bishop Teresa Jefferson-Snorton, who presides over the 5th Episcopal District and also serves as the secretary of the College of Bishops. And we have Dr. Melissa E. Clark, an emergency medical physician, a pioneering leader in population health of Fortune 500 companies, and a physician's consultant for healthcare transformation. I am so delighted to welcome all of you today, and we thank you for sharing with us. And I hope that members of the CME Church family will share and engage people to join us today in this conversation. Bishop Jefferson-Snorton, we're going to begin with you, and I see we have a little feedback, so we're going to try to address that. But what we want to do is to begin with you today, and we want to talk about faith and fear in this realm of science and medicine. And we know also with your background and expertise as a chaplain, among other great things, you might be able to give us some insight to this.
Thank you, Dr. Mason, for this opportunity and to the other panelists, good afternoon, and to all of those that are listening. So as we think about faith and fear in the age of COVID-19, let me begin by addressing the concept of fear, particularly as it relates to the COVID-19 vaccination. In 2 Timothy 1:7, "As believers, we are instructed that God has not given us a spirit of fear, but of power and love and of a sound mind." Paul had just reminded Timothy, "Need not fear the future, but rather draw on what is within him." He said, "Stir up the gifts," where God has not given us a spirit of fear, but a power and love and a sound mind. I believe this passage is relevant today because it is easy to give in to the fear of all the unknowns about COVID-19 and about the virus. But if we remember what is in us, we have what we need to figure out how to respond. In addition, we know enough about human nature to know that the fear response always puts us in a fight or flight mode, in which our impulses control our actions and not our sound mind. Our impulses hinder our ability to reason about whether or not the danger is real. So in the age of COVID-19, I contend we should not be in fear, but we should draw on spiritual power and reasoning as our response. Reasoning has told us, "Wear a mask, wash your hands, social distancing, because it can protect you to some degree from the virus." And so I would contend today that reasoning should also lead us to make an informed decision about taking the vaccination, not impulses, particularly when those impulses are based in historic fear, myths, misinformation, and misunderstanding. And making a decision about the vaccination, sound thinking is crucial, because we know that people of color, black and brown people, the elderly, and those with pre-existing conditions are more likely to have the most severe cases of COVID-19 and more likely to die than white people. That alone should have the attention of anyone that falls in that category, people of color, the elderly, and those with pre-existing conditions. Pretending that you've got some magical hedge of protection around you is denial, because while as Christians we are not of the world, we are indeed in the world, and thus we're subject to the same kinds of accidents, tragedies, and natural occurrences as everybody else. That said, in making a decision about the vaccination, each person should get accurate, reputable information. Social media is not a reliable source, because it's subject to the whims and the opinions and the misinterpretations, and yes, even sometimes the ulterior motives of whoever is posting or tweeting. So I'm glad we're having this town hall today and this discussion to provide accurate, reputable information. Part of the issue I think that we're dealing with in the black community is due to the irresponsible tweeting of our former president of the United States, and that unnecessarily and dangerously made the virus and the vaccination into a political issue, which heightens and repives all of our discrimination and being taken advantage of. But the vaccination is not a political issue. It is a health issue. It's a decision each person needs to make in the best interest of their own health and the health of their household and those whom they love. In addition, it is an act of love to protect your family and your friends by doing whatever you can to not contract the virus. As believers, if we think about Jesus' response to illness, we see several examples, but never, not one, where he condemned seeking medical care. He didn't condemn the woman with the issue of blood when she touched his garment. He simply acknowledged that what she had been missing was her faith. He didn't condemn the man sitting by the pool that would be stirred up and could offer healing, but he said to him, "The tragedy is you have no one to put you in." When Jesus saw one blind man, he made a potion of spit and mud and put it on his eyes. For me, Jesus recognized that sometimes external cures are necessary. Let me close with a visual reminder, because I believe God always offers interventions when cure is needed. In Numbers 21, the Hebrews were complaining, the Israelites were complaining to Moses for bringing them out of bondage, for bringing them out of isolation of being slaves in a foreign land. They were speaking out against Moses and against God. In response, God called a pandemic outbreak of snakes, and the people were bitten and many died. When they confessed their sins to Moses, Moses prayed, and God told Moses, "Make a fiery serpent and set it on a pole, and it shall be that everyone who is bitten, when he looks at it, shall live." And so Moses made a bronze serpent on a pole, set it before the people, and when they looked at it, they were healed. The image of the serpent in one on a pole is a symbol used today for healthcare and medicine. Here are two examples, the emergency star of life, the blue one you just saw, and the World Health Organization's logo. Both contain the historic memorial of how God offered healing. While the symbol and a similar one with two snakes are often quoted in Greek mythology, the biblical story is the oldest one, which is such a symbol of healing. The Israelites carried the symbol with them as they journeyed into the promised land, and they kept it within their community of faith, not in fear, but because it had been their vaccination against snake bite. Is this COVID-19 vaccination God's way of offering healing? Well, I surely can't say for sure, but I took my first shot just the other day in faith and not in fear, because I don't want to be sick. I don't want to make anyone else sick, and I believe that faith really is the only way to overcome fear of the unknown.
Thank you. Thank you, Bishop Jefferson-Snorton, for that education and lesson. And while I have you here, tell us about taking the vaccine. Were there any major effects, side effects, after you took your dose?
No, the thing is, I was getting an appointment. I am here in Alabama, and as soon as I heard about signing up online, I signed up in several different portals. One of the local hospitals had a portal, the Jefferson County had a portal, and it just seemed like to me it was taking forever, and I hope that that does not discourage people. But when I got the shot, I barely felt it. It just felt like any other shot that I had. I came home, actually, I went to work that evening. When I came home, I noticed for about an hour or so, my arm, the spot was a little bit sore, but by the time I went to bed, the soreness was gone. So, you know, those who, you know, we don't know how each individual person is going to respond to the vaccine. But for me, taking a vaccine and perhaps experiencing even, you know, a day or 24 hours of discomfort is far less scary than getting COVID-19 and risking death.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, we thank you for sharing. Now, let's take a little look at the one of the scientists and creators of the vaccine. Watch this.
...paid a visit to the National Institutes of Health last March. The leads at the Vaccine Research Center explain their lifesaving mission.
...why shake proteins that will bind?
The key to it, a 34-year-old doctor named Kizmiki Corbett.
I was just there telling the task force about the work that we've been doing.
Two weeks later, Dr. Corbett's team began the first stage of clinical trials.
We have taken a lot of the knowledge that we have gained over the last six years and applied it to a fairly revolutionary vaccine platform in collaboration with Moderna.
That vaccine rolled out within 10 months.
The vaccine teaches the body how to fend off a virus, because it teaches the body how to look for the virus by basically just showing the body the spike protein of the virus. The body then says, "Oh, we've seen this protein before. Let's go fight against it." That's how it works.
For a lot of people seeing you as the person who is part of this process, there's a trust factor.
To be honest, I didn't realize the level of impact that my visibility might have. I do my work because I love my work.
Dr. Corbett's interest in science began at an early age, but one opportunity made a key difference. She attended the University of Maryland Baltimore County as a Meyerhoff Scholar, an aggressive program that mentors minorities and women in science. Graduates include Surgeon General Jerome Adams.
Was she someone who's going to make it all along?
She was definitely going to make it in life.
Dr. Freeman Rabowski has been president there for nearly 30 years.
And so let us welcome my dear friend, Dr. Melissa Clark, one of the brilliant minds in medicine and science. And before I ask you to share, Dr. Clark, let's look at some of the rumors and perhaps myths or facts. But these are some of the recent numbers. We know that the vaccine is still being distributed throughout. Is it safe for me to get a vaccine if I have an underlying medical condition? Let's put another one. The government injected blacks with syphilis for 40 years. We alluded to that earlier and told us it was a vaccine. Please remember that. If you have the autoimmune disease, will it increase the risk of reaction to COVID-19? It's a form of genocide for blacks, people of color. We don't take the vaccination. So all of these things, these rumors and injectors that Bishop Jefferson-Snorton alluded to from our Facebook and Instagram scientists and medical doctors, you know, we do have Facebook doctors.
Oh, yeah.
Scientists and all, but tell us, because you've been knee-deep in this whole process, and you've also worked with the African-American churches up in the Washington, DC area. So please provide to the CME Church some insight from your perspective, and please know we are very delighted to have you with us today.
Well, I am very delighted to be here, and thank you so much for having me, Dr. Mason, and thank you to the CME Church and all the leadership that you acknowledged at the beginning. Thank you so much for having me, and thank you to the audience for being here and my wonderful panelists, co-panelists. So I'm going to talk a little bit just about how I see this COVID pandemic and how healthcare and the black church can and have been working together. So first of all, I just wanted to say too that I had the opportunity to interview Dr. Kizmiki Corbett, and it was just really heartwarming to be able to talk to her, because she, just hearing that she has been involved dispels a lot of the myths, because we see ourselves represented in the process of developing this vaccine. And in addition, there are scientists who work at the FDA who are African-American, who've been on the approval committees, who've represented our interests, and there are thousands of doctors who have looked at the evidence and read over the papers, just like myself. And as we talk to the public and our patients, we're able to dispel a lot of those myths and provide facts. But I want to talk out first, as I start to talk about the black church's involvement, I just have to say that my mother is a retired professor of music at a HBCU, but after she retired, she graduated seminary to become a minister. And from an early age, she always taught us, my sister and brother, about black history. As a matter of fact, when I was four, I was writing Free Angela Davis letters. And then my dad was a pharmacist, and he, of course, gave me appreciation for how important good health and access to healthcare is. So I am particularly honored to represent what they've taught me about health, about spirituality, and about social activism as I talk about how healthcare and the black church are working together in this pandemic. So first, I want to start off by mentioning that history part, because if we don't talk about where we've been, we don't know where we're going. So as black people in America, you know, our existence, of course, you, the historian, know this, has been one long crisis after another. But the black church has been there to help shepherd us through it at every turn, from the Underground Railroad, providing places for enslaved Africans to escape safely and providing them food along the way, to our civil rights organizations, providing a place for us to meet, to organize, meeting space, communications, resources, everything. And now here we are in a crisis again that is killing 70,000 black people and counting. Forty-one percent of black businesses have gone under, and countless people of all backgrounds. But black people have lost jobs, are hungry, and are on the verge of homelessness. And so in all of this, I think the black church, in partnership with healthcare organizations, is showing up and providing leadership in some unexpected ways and some expected ways. And it hasn't always been smooth. I mean, a few churches at the beginning continued to meet, because it was hard to pivot, to try to find an effective way to serve with the doors being closed. This caused some churches to be super-spreaders. We saw one large congregation lose a lot of national membership. But I think the majority of churches have stepped up with the message that God is not in the building. He is in the body of worshippers, and no matter whether you're worshiping virtually or not, you know, God is among you. And so they've continued to operate in that way, and they've actually expanded and reinvented their mission, and that's who I want to focus on. So we know COVID has been hitting our community because of three factors that the black church has been able to step up and help us with. We know that we have higher exposure to COVID-19 due to economic reasons. Eighty percent of black and brown people are frontline workers. We oftentimes live in multi-generational households with less space, and so the virus spreads more easily. Another factor is we've gotten sicker from COVID due to underlying health conditions and our relationship to the medical system. So, you know, we have higher rates of obesity, diabetes, heart disease, high blood pressure, kidney disease, lung disease, sickle cell, and autoimmune diseases, all of which put us at higher risk for COVID-19. And then when we have gone historically to seek healthcare, we sometimes experience racism from the very people who are supposed to be helping us. Our complaints get ignored. We are disrespected. We're talked down to. It results in misdiagnosis, disengaging from the healthcare system, and unnecessary deaths. And all of this is worsened by our lack of health insurance, oftentimes living in neighborhoods where we don't have easy access to healthy foods and to doctors. And then in the COVID-19 pandemic, it has manifested by living in testing deserts where it's hard to get tests or PPE deserts where it's hard to get masks. And then finally, the third factor is the trust issue. You know, we have been living under an administration previous to this administration that has given us mixed messages and outright lies about the pandemic, has caused us to question the credibility of our federal health institutions like the CDC and the FDA and the NIH. And all that is undergirded by our historic mistrust from things like Tuskegee that you brought up earlier. So all that together, the economic issues, the healthcare issues, and the trust issues have been places where the black church and the healthcare partnering with healthcare institutions have had to step into the breach. And number one, we know that black churches have been at the forefront of food distribution and clothing distribution sites for families in need. When it's come to healthcare, we know that black churches have held masking workshops on how to make masks or distribute masks to the community. They've been testing sites when it was hard to get a test. And then when it came to that mistrust, you know, there was education about the very things that the bishop just talked about, mask-wearing, social distancing, and when to seek help when you feel sick and where to go. So, and there's been a poll here in DC. You mentioned that I work with the Vaccine Task Force in DC around safe and equitable distribution of the vaccine. So we tried to gather information from the community as much as possible ahead of time, and it showed that among many people in the population, especially the younger age group, 18 to 40, they don't really trust doctors. They trust everybody but doctors. And older age groups trust their minister, their clergy, more than they trust doctors. So it's important that when we're giving out information and messaging that we partner with trusted messengers like clergy from the community to give those same messages. I work with a consortium here in DC called the Leadership Council for Healthy Communities. It's a consortium of over 70 churches, faith institutions, actually, because there are mosques also involved. And we have built, stood up, a very successful program where churches make calls through a virtual call center out to their congregants and members of the community and see, do they need help with understanding more about COVID, where to get testing, where to get vaccines? And then they find, are there social needs? Are there medical needs? And if there are unmet needs in those areas, they refer them to Howard University, the School of Social Work, and to the hospital, the Department of Family and Community Medicine. And they've been able to outreach to over 6,000 people. They've made over 1,500 referrals that have been successfully completed and ongoing. So now with the vaccines, we're seeing the same power plays that reinforce those same inequities that I talked about, rearing their ugly heads as white and more resourced people jump the line, going to black and brown neighborhoods to edge out the very people who are dying at three times the rate of whites. So black people were 13% of the population. We've only gotten 6% of, only 6% of those who have been vaccinated have been African-American. And it's being justified by saying that black people are hesitant to take the vaccine, but that's not true. Even in that video that you just cited, originally, we started off at 60% hesitancy. We've dropped down to now to 30% hesitancy. So it was funny with the video you showed. It showed that the white community had 71% acceptance. That's actually 29%, or the general population, 29% hesitancy. So the fact that black people have dropped to between 30 to 35, we're kind of right in there with the general population now. So the fact that vaccines are being allocated seemingly at lower rates in some states to communities of color because of hesitancy is really a form of bias and discrimination. And so what the consortiums that I am working with around the black churches is they're stepping into the gap through an organization called the Black Coalition Against COVID-19, one that I also work with, and this group of 70 faith institutions works with them as well, to meet at So the fact that black people have dropped to between thirty to thirty-five, we're kind of right in there with the general population now. So the fact that vaccines are being allocated seemingly at lower rates in some states to communities of color because of hesitancy is really a form of bias and discrimination. And so what I, the consortiums that I am working with around the black churches is we're, they're stepping into the gap through an organization called the Black Coalition Against COVID-19, one that I also work with and, and the seventy uh, group of seventy uh, faith institutions works with them as well to meet at the highest levels of government in the Biden, Biden administration and with state governments to say, hey, we need to have vaccines allocated to these communities just for these communities, just for people who live in these communities. And furthermore, we as black churches that are not using our four walls for traditional services, we've been using them for food, food distribution and, and that, and uh, and, and testing, we will also step up and use them for vaccinations. And so we're seeing that happening, that's happening right here in, in, in Washington DC. And it's wildly successful. The community really appreciates it. In addition, there's also uh, food distribution and also um, education activities going on at the same time to try to dispel those exact same myths um, around vaccination that you just outlined. We know that the vaccines are effective for African Americans, even those who have underlying health concerns. We know they're safe overall. There have been minimal number of severe side effects. We do know the effects of the um, chills and, and feeling feverish and achy that can happen, especially after the second shot for a day or two. We know the sore arm that again can last for two to three days. But severe side effects, very, very few and far between. For example, allergic reactions happen about eleven per million vaccines given. And then as far as waiting to see if side effects happen, we know that most side effects from vaccines happen in the first two months. We are way beyond that period and we've crossed the threshold of fifty million vaccinations given now. And then the last way that I would, I have to say in terms of the ways that the black church can, can, can work with the healthcare community is COVID has caused unbelievable amount of mental health issues, anxiety, depression, domestic violence, alcohol, substance abuse, and even suicide. This disease leaves us, who, you know, leaves people who've had it with survivor's guilt and with post-traumatic stress disorder. I do a Facebook Live show every Monday night and my next episode, not tomorrow night, but the week after, is going to be about that particular issue. And it also affects our nervous system, giving us things like brain fog and forgetfulness. So there will and, and is and will continue to be a huge need for the resiliency that the faith community can bring in helping people to navigate these issues. Um, by partnering with mental health professionals and really providing our communities with sustained, sustained support that is needed in the area of mental health. So just in summary, I think the black church can continue to play these roles, education around COVID prevention, access to vaccines and education about vaccines, how to stay healthy. Um, because overall those underlying health conditions like obesity and high blood pressure and heart disease can be addressed by adequate nutrition, exercise, sleep, and managing our mental health and the stress sores in our life by evidence-based methods like prayer and meditation, which of course the black church excels at. So thanks, uh, you know, for having me and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much, Dr. Clark. We appreciate the information you've shared. I want to share a personal testimony uh, from a beloved member. Uh, the hard-working Dr. Teresa Doohard, who just recently uh, lost her beloved sister. She says the coronavirus is real and we must take it seriously. I lost my beloved sister to COVID-19 pneumonia. We must do what we can, which includes wearing masks, social distancing, educating ourselves and protecting ourselves and others. I will take my first vaccine uh, this Saturday and encourage my loved ones to do that. We all know Dr. Doohard in our church. Uh, she is our uh, technology guru. She manages the wonderful website and others. And then we shared and mourned with her uh, in the uh, passing of her sister. Uh, and so we appreciate the information because what we want to accomplish today is for people to be informed and to make your own decision based on faith, but also based on the medicine uh, and, and the science as well. Uh, and so you have given us that uh, information. We're going to bring you back up uh, shortly. Uh, and I think this is a good segue uh, now to I hear uh, just a little from Dr. Jane Morgan.
We take a look at the COVID vaccine distribution within our medical facilities. And we look at the people who are coming first, our frontline healthcare workers, nurses and physicians, many of whom will be from the African-American community. We could not afford to have them opt out of this COVID vaccine because of fear. We cannot have them afford to take a step back, not because we don't care about them. What, the reason we can't afford it is because they are part of our ecosystem. And for us to be successful, we need to be able to achieve herd immunity within our ecosystem of the hospitals. And so we can't afford to have entire populations of people say, thanks, but no thanks. We all have to be able to step forward and move this message forward, reach out to people who have fear, who have reticence. I mean, it's more than vaccine hesitancy. I, I actually am almost amused when I hear that vaccine hesitancy. It's a very, it's a very nice term that maybe we can use in ten years. That completely does not encompass what the black person thinks when they think about vaccines and clinical trials.
We're so delighted to have with us today Dr. Valencia Bagby Young. And uh, Dr. Valencia, Dr. Young, we've asked you to talk about the psychological and emotional uh, impact uh, and to share with us from your lens and from your working, uh, the impact of what this virus and the vaccine has done. Delighted to have you with us today.
Thank you, Dr. Mason. Thank you for this wonderful opportunity on to acknowledge the emotional impact of uh, the history of African Americans or black people in our healthcare system and to just share um, a realistic perspective on the COVID-19 vaccine. It is no coincidence or mistake that we are delivering this message about the COVID-19 vaccine on February twenty-eighth, this, the last day of Black History Month. Historically, there is justification for concerns with healthcare for African Americans or black people and other groups who represent vulnerable population in the, in the United States of America. And yes, I said the United States of America, um, because sometimes that is a hard pill for us to follow, to swallow. Fear and mistrust of the medical community by black people can be attributed to a history of medical professionals and researchers relying on us as patients for various experiments, treatments and procedures. You have seen the video clips and, and heard the bishop and Dr. Clark and Dr. Mason speak about uh, the Tuskegee study on syphilis and the six hundred black men who were infected and affected and left untreated. Um, and there's another well-known historical case regarding Henrietta Lacks. She was diagnosed with cervical cancer. And upon her death, samples of her cancerous cells were taken and they were later utilized in research. Neither Henrietta nor her family members were aware of or consented to the use of her tissues for medical research. So these are just two examples of the many incidents in which black people and other people of color were taken advantage of by the medical community. Unfortunately, there are still disparities in healthcare for black people and other people of color. Disparities in race, ethnicity and health insurance have negatively impacted access to treatment, which has broadened the disparities in medical management. However, this is not the case with the COVID-19 vaccines. The COVID-19 virus has infected thousands of people of all ethnicities, genders, socioeconomic status, you name it. It has touched everyone, every community worldwide. Okay. So the fact that the outcome, there, it is a fact that the outcome for black people in general has been much worse than other racial and ethnic groups. And undoubtedly, this is intertwined with some of the disparities in healthcare and the mistrust. Some of the reasons that um, were identified as us being vulnerable during this current pandemic are related to poverty, segregation secondary to social injustices, racial discrimination, chronic diseases and social clustering in terms of community housing. So apartments or affordable housing in which people are living in close quarters. And then generations of family members living together in the same home. That is our parents, grandparents, children, grandchildren and other relatives or friends living together. This is not unique to black people. However, it is relevant in identifying black people as a vulnerable population disproportionately impacted by the COVID-19 related deaths. And us experiencing worldwide and within our own community, the emotional impact and fallout. And we've heard uh, Dr. Clark share some of that, some of the emotional fallout that we are experiencing. All of this history and the current disparities are taking and have taken an emotional and financial toll on all of us. But this is what you need to understand. If you prayed about this pandemic, the deaths, the people who are still dying, the healthcare providers, grocery store, department store workers and everyone else who is essential and has been essential throughout this pandemic. If you have prayed for them, about them and for healing for all of us, then what we need to understand is that this vaccination may be the realization that God heard you, that he has answered your prayers. Black people were not asked to be the first to receive this vaccine. Healthcare providers, frontline workers, they were first, frontline healthcare workers. And I will say that in the past, when we were used for experiments, we were first. We didn't have a choice. We weren't given a choice. We were put out there upfront and that has created some emotional negativity, negativity, some fear, some uncertainty, but understand this is not the same thing. Black people were included in the studies and the research, people with chronic conditions. They were included in this research from which these vaccines were developed. Now understand this, black people, we are not at, we were not asked to be first, but we are being offered the opportunity to receive this vaccine. And you may not trust the scientists, the biologists, the healthcare professionals or the politicians who were involved in creating, administering and encouraging the COVID-19 vaccine. However, I speak for myself when I say I trust God. And those of us who have been prayerful and faithful need to step out on faith and start believing God and taking him at his word. The COVID-19 vaccine is by no means a cure. It is not a cure. It is not one hundred percent effective. But in the absence of the vaccine, we do know that the COVID-19 virus is still killing people. And it's killing people by the thousands and black people are dying at a much higher rate. And for those who survive this virus, some of them are left with long-term chronic conditions that they will never be the same again. Or we leave, we are left with the emotional impact of losing people and not having the opportunity to tell somebody that you love them one more time or to be there for them or to hold their hand or to even be with them in the hospital. And just the thought of a family member or anyone dying alone or in a hospital isolated, where they're, they don't even have somebody right there by their side because it's not safe. Those are the things that we need to be thinking about. Because if you become infected with the COVID-19 virus, you risk not only your own life, but the lives of your children, your grandchildren, parents, grandparents and other family members and friends who may come into contact with you and you may not even know that you're infected. During this COVID-19 pandemic, the one great thing that has resulted in increase, oh, that has resulted from all of this is the increased awareness that black lives matter. And that to me is so important because I'm going to leave you with this thought or these thoughts. If you've been marching or speaking or supporting black lives in any manner whatsoever, if you truly believe that black lives matter, then I encourage you to take a look in the mirror and tell yourself that your black life matters too. There are many times in life in which we do not have a choice. This is not one of them. So choose wisely. Do not make your decision based on fear, but make a faith-based decision with the knowledge of the facts that are available to you and at your disposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank, oh wow. Thank you so much, uh, Dr. Bagby Young. We uh, we appreciate you very much. Uh, and you really spoke some real truth to that. And I, I know people are listening and watching. I'm reading some of the uh, comments that are, are coming in. Uh, and we'll bring you back shortly. What we want to do now uh, is to shift for a moment uh, and look at our church. As you can see, I uh, shared with you uh, the update of our bishops uh, with regards to the uh, COVID vaccine and uh, our college of bishops as well. And you can see that some have, are scheduled. Some have taken their first dose and um, many have taken the final doses as well. What we also want to do uh, is to share, let me share this video that Sister I have been since.
Vaccine shot.
Wait, man. Start again.
This is my second vaccine shot. I thank God I had no side effects from the first one and I still praise God from whom all blessings flow.
Are you ready?
Yes, yes.
Okay. One, two, three.
Yeah.
Blow the birthday candles.
Yeah.
All right, all done.
And so throughout our beloved Zion, uh, many people have taken the vaccine. We have some images that I want to share before I bring our senior bishop up of some of our presiding elders. I think this is presiding elder Wayne Williams. And uh, we have uh, I think that's Jacqueline Carter Henry, Brother Carter and Augusta, the president of Miles College, uh, Dr. Bobby Knight and Jacqueline Carter Henry. Uh, we have Dr. McDuffie. Uh, Bishop Brown is with his, has his sticker on as well. So many of our CMEs have taken the shot and many of you are uh, in the chat room and sharing your comments about uh, taking it. But today, the face of the vaccine uh, is our own beloved senior bishop. And I have a photograph of him taking uh, his shot. And so we have asked uh, Senior Bishop Reddit to come uh, and to share with the denomination and our guests who are watching uh, as we tackle this moment in season uh, that we're in. We're delighted to have Senior Bishop Reddit with us. And then after he finishes, we'll bring everyone back up, see if there are any questions. And I know that uh, Bishop Jefferson Storton has a couple of closing remarks that she would like to share as well. Welcome Bishop Reddit. You, would you unmute yourself, please?
Thank you very much. I muted because I didn't want to cause feedback.
Okay.
But I appreciate you inviting me to be a part of this today. And I want to thank you for the panelists. I appreciate being with Dr. Clark and Dr. Bagby Young and Bishop Jefferson Snorton. I'm a little bit different. I grew up in an atmosphere where science and medicine were appreciated. And I grew up during the era of segregated schools. And our black nurse, Nurse Dent, went to every school in the county to help give vaccinations. So uh, we had vaccinations for typhoid fever every year and often had vaccinations for polio. So we learned to appreciate what science and medicine was giving to us. And it was really only as a young adult that I learned about the Tuskegee experiment. Uh, so we, we had a different mindset about vaccinations. Um, they've been very important to me. And yes, I took, I took both vaccinations now. I had the first one January sixteen and the second one February sixth. And I know the difficulty of trying to get the vaccination. I was searching and searching and I was on list, yes. But I ended up getting it because in one of our churches, Christian Chapel Temple of Faith, uh, where Dr. where Dr. Venici Burns is pastor, I got the flyer that the other senior members of the church got, saying that here is a hospital that has two days of walk-ins for vaccinations. And I was dressed in my collar because it was a day that I was on my way to a 1 o'clock graveside service. But they offered vaccinations from 5:00 AM, they said, to 9:00 PM. And I got there in the line at 5:15 AM, and there were already at least 900 people because they closed the line off soon after me because they were only going to do 1,200 a day. I could not get it that morning, but they gave me a card to come back that evening. And I got my vaccination that evening, though they said it would be about 5:00 to 7:00. I got it at 9:20, and I was very glad to get it. I would wish that we would take vaccinations very seriously. Those of you who know me know that I have done and I still do international travel related to missions. I never do international travel without asking the health department what vaccinations I need. Because they, they know more than I know. And so I go there and I get those vaccinations because it's the safe and responsible thing to do. I agree with what Dr. Clark brought to us, that, that we need more vaccinations in our own communities. And I would wish that in our communities, we would open up our doors to vaccinations to come into our churches. I must say, however, that the politics of the past administration is still with us to some degree. And some of it is in the way that the governors of certain states are rolling out the vaccinations with us as well. I do know in my own county that our health department had targeted areas of black and brown persons to get the vaccinations in their own communities. And the governor overturned it. The governor said, if you're not going to give it to everybody equally, suddenly everybody is equal. If you're not going to give it to everybody equally, we will not give you any vaccinations at all. So we're working with a system where systemic racism still exists. We would, as soon as we could, take the vaccination. I would also say this, though, that we need, aside from the vaccination, to continue to social distance. I don't know. I, I've, I've got people now who say back to me, you say we're not taking this seriously. And I do say that. I go to graveside services and funerals, and I need to say to us, we're not taking this seriously. We get together as if nothing is happening. And I just, I don't understand it. I will go to that graveside service, but anybody who knows me knows I'm not going to linger very long. Because this is a time for social distancing and taking care of ourselves and each other. So I think we began in the right place today, as Bishop Jefferson Snorton led us to, God has not given us the spirit of fear, but of love, of power, and of love, and of a sound mind. And it is an expression of love and respect for ourselves and for others if we vaccinate as soon as we can, and if we social distance and continue to keep washing our hands. And thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Bishop. And we appreciate you sharing with us today. Let me bring our panelists back up. We do have a question that I like to share. And whoever can answer it, please do. Just a second. See if I can find it. So Nikita Daniels, Nikadia Daniels had a question regarding how quickly the vaccine was created, what side effects are, as well as what the long-term consequences are. Can anyone tackle that question?
Sure, Ms. Daniels. A great question. I touched a little bit on it in my remarks, but I'd be happy to expand. So actually, in that video that, that Dr. Mason played with Dr. Corbett, Dr. Kozmikia Corbett, she talked about the fact that this platform, the way that the virus, that the vaccine is delivered into the body, had, they had been working on it, she had been working on it for six years. In general, it has been around for 10 years. And all they did was sort of repurpose all the work they had been doing and focused it on developing a vaccine for the coronavirus. And the reason it happened so quickly was because they had already done all the work. All they had to do was get the genetic material of the coronavirus and put it into a fat droplet, and then put it into the body. Now, it's really important to understand that when you're exposed to the genetic material of a virus, you're all, you're, we're constantly exposed to that. When you get a common cold or the flu or any kind of viral infection, you're exposed to the virus's messenger RNA, which is the exact same messenger RNA that they use in the vaccine. The only difference is, it's a very tiny part of the total amount of genetic material that the virus has. It's only for the spike protein so that your body can recognize the spike protein when your own body starts to make it due to the vaccination. So the side effects mean that the body recognizes, or the body, because it's responding to the vaccine, has the chills and the aches and the fevers and the swollen arm. All that shows that the vaccine, that your body is responding to the vaccine as expected. And as far as long-term side effects, again, most side effects happen within the first two months of vaccination for all the vaccines that we've been exposed to. And so what we've seen, we've, we've been exposed to it more than two months. What we've seen is the serious side effects just are very, very few and far between, including those allergic reactions, severe allergic reactions, 11 per million doses of the vaccine given.
Dr. Mason, may I add?
Yes.
In my case, the only, the only side effects I had were perhaps a drowsy day or two after the first vaccine. But I had no other side effects, and the needle wasn't even hurting me.
I, I should mention that I've had both doses. I took the Moderna vaccine, the first dose, uneventful, I had a sore arm. The second dose, also a sore arm, but I was down for about a day and a half with achiness and, and chills and the like. And it's more common if you're under 55 to have those, those symptoms than if you're over 55.
We have a, a comment, and let me put my readers on, from Sheila Perry Reverend. "I'm not sure why I'm crying, but God knows. I'm just grateful to hear Dr. Young speak. Her words hit me. I will proceed accordingly. I trust God." And so we thank you. My, my prayer was, and as I talk to Bishop Walker, and, and let me just stop for just a minute. Thank Bishop James Walker, whose idea this was to do this town hall meeting. And I so appreciate him including me as a part of this, and always the great work of Dr. Duhard. But my prayer was that somebody's mind might be changed today. At least one person, if not more. And we're looking at these great comments. Bishop Jefferson, you want to share about some of the efforts? Because really, the CME Church has been out in front in terms of sharing information to the church. And you wanted to share some things that are on the website as well.
Yes, basically. Thank you, Dr. Mason. I, I really want to share three things. First, I need to give a shout out to Miles College and our president, Dr. Bobby Knight. That's where I got my shot. I was finally able, because she arranged through Miles's new health clinic for the faculty and staff of Miles College to get vaccinated. And because they had enough, they also invited the board of trustees. And so I want to give a shout out to her. And that's just a good example of how we can leverage the resources that we have, both as a church and as a black community, and make sure that we do get the access and not allow others to say our hesitancy is the reason we're not getting the vaccine. My jurisdiction includes the states of Alabama and Florida. In both of those states, I'm working with a group of pastors who are scheduling all kinds of meetings with our state departments of health. We have provided here in Alabama, the Department of Health with a list of churches that could accommodate and offer vaccines, and we're kind of tracking that and making sure that they don't forget about us. We're doing the same thing in Florida. So I would encourage every pastor and every religious leader to get involved and make sure that your community and your members have access. And also make sure they have the assistance they need in signing up. Most of it has to be done online. Many people may not have a computer or may not be comfortable. But we have resources, people in our churches who can help those. And maybe even think about providing transportation socially distanced to those who may need to get to the vaccination site. There are all kinds of ways in which we have to use the resources we have to make sure that we get what we need to stay healthy. For those of you who want more information, we will post a link on the CME Church's website to this recording. And there are a number of other resources. On the homepage, if you scroll down to the bottom of the cmechurch.org, you'll see this COVID-19 information. The College of Bishops have a statement. We have links to several videos. We have links to fact sheets from the CDC. We really want our people to be informed and aware and use reliable, accurate information in making this very important healthcare decision. So that's the cmechurch.org. On the homepage, scroll down to the bottom until you get the COVID-19 information. And you'll find resources you can share with your congregation, share with your family, and help encourage people to be informed, not by myths and not by fear.
Thank you, Bishop Jefferson Snorton. We have a few more questions. If you can, and we said this was a town hall, and we invited people to share. Jermaine Woods asked the question, "The single-dose Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine has not been approved, but has lowered its numbers. Please speak to the concern of people to seek one vaccine over another." Can anyone respond?
I'd, I'd be happy to. So, yes, that's, on the face of it, seems very concerning, but it's not. We have to remember that the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine was tested in a much different environment than the Pfizer and the Moderna. So it was fighting a much stronger opponent, if you will, because it got tested sort of at the height of the global pandemic, so more people were getting sick with COVID-19. And so there was more chance that you would get exposed to it. And it was tested against those South African variants and the Brazilian variant, which we know are strains of the virus that are more infectious. So therefore, when we hear that it's 74% effective, or sorry, 72% effective in the United States, 66% effective worldwide compared to 94%, yeah, that sounds very troubling. But what, one thing we need to know again is that it's more, it's, we know that it's effective against those variants. We don't necessarily know head-to-head that the Pfizer and the Moderna had the same test. And then secondly, we know that it's 100% effective in preventing severe cases of COVID and death, which in the end is really what we want to see. So that's something to keep in mind, and of course, it's one shot as opposed to two with the others. So you don't have to really worry about making sure that you're there exactly at four weeks to get your follow-up dose.
Great, great. Thank you. We have another question. Someone, let me see, I think Ms. Daniels again asked a question. How could they have been working on something that they were not aware of until 2018? I wanted this question to come up, because I think that has been a myth in the community for quite a while, until late 2018 or early 2019.
I'll, I'll be happy to. So, yeah, so the, the, that method of delivering vaccines to the body is one that applies to a lot of different viruses and a lot of different bacteria. So they were working on the method for 10 years, not necessarily the coronavirus. When coronavirus was discovered, as you heard Dr. Corbett say in her video, she gave a presentation to the administration, led, and then led the team, because they were like, oh, this sounds like it could work to address the coronavirus. And so therefore, that branch of the NIH and many, many, many other labs around the world received funding to try to apply that technology to the coronavirus. So yes, coronavirus is new. It came about in 2019. That's why it's called COVID-19. That's where the 2019 came from. But the technology to make the virus existed 10 years, sorry, the vaccine existed 10 years before that.
Okay, great. And so here's what we'll do. I'm going to take the questions. I'm going to share them with Dr. Clark and ask if she would do me a old family friend favor and, and respond to some of them, and perhaps you already have. She, tell us about your show, and then we're gonna give each of you a chance to make any closing remarks. Dr. Valencia, you seem to have a fan club that Connecticut Mafia is in the group, and they are singing your praises, especially Bishop Walker. But we're gonna give each of you a class, a chance, excuse me, to make a closing statement. Dr. Clark, tell us about your show that comes on Facebook Live each Monday.
Well, thank you, and I'll, I'll be happy to do you a solid and answer those questions. So, and you have been on my show. It's called Excuse Me, Doctor. And it's based on my book called Excuse Me, Doctor, I've Got What?, Taking Ownership of Your Health and Making Healthcare Work for You. And it's really all about making sure that people have the right information to make the best decisions for themselves, their family, and their communities. I'm not trying to force anybody to do anything, but I think everybody needs to have the right information. So it comes on every Monday night, 9:00 PM on YouTube Live and Facebook Live. I take questions just like this. I often have a guest. And I try to get into the chat, even to the ones that I don't get to afterwards, and, and answer them. So I'd be happy if anyone would love to join us. And as I always sign off on my show, be wise, be well, and be health empowered.
Wonderful. Dr. Bagby Young, any closing remarks or thoughts from you?
Just that, you know, I'm just so thankful that people are open and receptive. And I'm so grateful to Dr., to Bishop Walker for reaching out to me and inviting me. And then for you, Dr. Mason, reaching out to me as well. I'm just thankful for the opportunity to encourage people to be informed consumers and make decisions that are gonna benefit their health and the health of their family members and the people that we, that they love and we love. And so I just thank you for this opportunity. I am scheduled to receive my vaccine on March 16th because the way Connecticut rolled it out, I was not eligible until March 1st because I've not been directly interacting with patients in the office since March of last year. So I just encourage people to do their research, to get the information, and to use it wisely. Thank you.
Thank you. Bishop Jefferson Snorton? I think you're muted.
Thank you. I just want to thank all of those who have been watching and tuning in. And I hope that you will share what you have learned with someone else. And most of all, encourage people to be informed. It is really unfortunate that we might jeopardize our health and well-being going off of misinformation. So I, I'm just grateful that so many people have tuned in today and continue to use the resources and continue to be empowered with faith and not fear.
Amen. Thank you, Bishop Jefferson Snorton. And Senior Bishop Reddick, any closing thoughts?
Thank you, Dr. Mason. I want to also thank Bishop Walker, Bishop Jefferson Snorton, and the College of Bishops, because they made sure that this was a part of what the church would get from us. Secondly, I want to say to those people who are waiting to make up your minds, over 50 million people have been vaccinated. How many more are you waiting on? I mean, they have been vaccinated without serious problems. Thank you very much, and God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you all panelists. I appreciate you so much. I have just a few announcements to share with you before we say good evening. Again, I'm grateful for these phenomenal panelists that have shared with us today. On this evening, tonight, at 8:00 Eastern Standard Time, Dr. Victor Keller, our General Secretary, Department of Finance Investments, and the Chief Financial Officer, will be presenting CME Church Connectional Budget Investment Versus Assessment. And you can go to the CME Church website to register in advance and to receive your link to join. On this coming Tuesday, we have Good Trouble Tuesday, Bishop William H. Graves Memorial NAACP Membership Drive, featuring Mrs. Donna Graves, Jackie Graves Thomas, and Marvin Thomas Jr. This is hosted by Bishop Marvin Frank Thomas Sr., the Membership Drive Coordinator and NAACP staffers. 7:00 PM on Facebook Live. Again, you can go to our website to receive that information. I'm excited that during the month of March, as we celebrate Women's History Month, I have some wonderful guests who will be appearing as we celebrate the women in the CME Church who have made some phenomenal contributions, some you know and some you may not know. On next Sunday, we will have the church members and family of one of the world's greatest voices, Nina Simone. Many of you may or may not know that Nina Simone was born Eunice Wayman in Tryon, North Carolina. And she grew up in the St. Luke CME Church. And so on that Sunday, her pastor, the pastor of the church and members of the church who remember growing up with Eunice, now the late Nina Simone will come and share with us. On the second Sunday in March, we will celebrate and observe and hear from members of some of the sororities. The CME Church has given three national presidents, including Maul Brown Porter, who was the Seventh Supreme Basilisk of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. Evelyn Hood, who I have the honor of being called her pastor. She is aged 96 and she's the 14th International Grand Basilisk of Sigma Gamma Rho. And the late, great Dr. Yvonne Kennedy, the 19th National President of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. And we'll have family and friends sharing memories of and experiences of these great women who are part of the CME Church. And then on the third Sunday, we will spend some time talking about the amazing and the remarkable Amanda America Dixon from Sparta, Georgia, who was a CME and at one time was the wealthiest African-American woman in the country. But you'll have to tune in for those of you who don't know how she gained her wealth and how she fought to keep her wealth as well. I am always grateful for your tuning in. And again, thank you to Bishop Walker. Thank you, Senior Bishop Bishop Jefferson Snorton, our guest, the College of Bishops, Bishop Carter, the Chair, Bishop Thomas Louis Brown, my bishop, and Dr. Teresa Duhard for your tremendous support and encouragement of the work that we're trying to do through conversations. And now we will close out with another version of Lift Every Voice and Sing by Kirk Franklin. And remember, just because tomorrow is March 1st does not mean that Black History Month ends. I want you and remind you, as I told my members today, that every day you continue to drape yourself in blackness and march on till victory is won. This is Skip Mason. Have a great afternoon and evening.